Care Cam Car Commissioners, no communications, just note agenda modifications. We had an item for Planning Commissioner and Ad Hoc Subcommittee Reports. We'll probably keep that on the agenda going forward. Nothing further.
Excellent. Okay, next on the item is open oral requests. This is the point in our meeting where any member of the public may address the commission on an item that is not on the agenda. You may speak up to five minutes, but the Planning Commission may not take any action today. Would anyone like to speak? In the audience or online? Okay, seeing none. We move on. To the first public hearing item, that's item two on the agenda. And let's see. So we will be. We will introduce the item, then the staff. Will be describing the item and talk about the item. Then we have questions and answers for the staff. Then the public hearing starts, applicant speaks. Other speaker speaks, and then we do question and answer, and then motion by commission. Just as a. Just as a way of how we conduct this meeting. So do we have any disclosures before I introduce the item? Disclosures regarding this item. He was excited, thank you.
Yeah, I visited the future.
Okay.
I drove past.
So did I, I drove past the site, I'm familiar with the site?
I drove the site, I've also been in La Hiba many times. The restaurant.
Okay.
Yeah.
Resident expert in restaurants. Okay, so with that. This item is. Let's see, Public Hearing Considered for Santo Escobar. Permit full service onsite alcohol sales. In association with an existing restaurant tenant space. With approved outdoor seating. Doing business as La Hiba Mexican Grill. And probably located at ten East Hamilton Avenue. Lead number one hundred. Application under consideration is a conditional use modification permit, has conditional use permit modification. The file number PLN twenty twenty four dash one seventy. And with that, Nishant Sione.
Okay, good evening, everyone. My name is Nishant Sione, I'm the lead planner for this project. The project site is an unoccupied tenant space in an approximately thirteen thousand seven hundred square foot commercial building. On a one acre lot at the southeast corner of East Hamilton Avenue and South Winchester Boulevard. Both the zoning district and land use designation are general commercial. The applicant is requesting a conditional use permit modification to allow beer, wine, and liquor service. And to amend approved hours of operation in association with a soon to be opened restaurant called La Hiba Mexi Grill. The existing use permit allows outdoor seating and beer and wine service only, so the addition of liquor service requires the modification. There will be no new construction, but there will be tenant improvements. The restaurant will have eighty seats, sixteen of which are outdoors. Business hours will be seven AM to ten PM Monday through Sunday. And operational hours will be six AM to eleven PM Monday through Sunday. There will be no live music or bar area and food service will be maintained at all times. There will be no alcohol only service at the restaurant. This is a site plan, just gives you an idea of where the restaurant is, it's on the right side along Winchester Boulevard. Where the former Kazoo Sushi Boat Restaurant used to be. Project meets all necessary findings, it's an allowed use that's consistent with the general plan and surrounding commercial uses. There will be no impact to site layout or significant increase in traffic. There's no history of nuisance impacts and conditions of approval will ensure that potential nuisance impacts are limited. The project won't result in an over concentration of onsite alcohol sales. Approval would result in a concentration of one onsite alcohol sale use per fifteen acres. For the commercial corridor along East Hamilton. Which is significantly lower than other commercial corridors in the city. Staff has received no public comment on this project. Staff has made all necessary findings and is recommending approval of the project.
Okay, thank you very much for that. Any questions for staff? We can start from this side.
Just to clarify. Condition use permits are for the location, not the business, so like the address has a permit to sell beer and wine. So if anybody wanted to open a restaurant there, it would be like. This is an extra good place to open a restaurant, because they have to get an extra permit to sell beer and wine kind of thing?
Correct, yeah. If they wanted to sell only beer and wine, then the permit would be existing.
Right, this one, it wants to have different hours. And to also, okay, understood, that's all I had.
Thank you, what a question.
No question.
No question.
No question. Question?
So liquor and when we streamline the permitting, we intentionally left liquor out. Right, okay, so that potentially is something to consider long term, although issues with downtown. But that's why it's coming across. I have a question on the hours. Is it like any change in hours, or is there some? Like literally, if they changed it by half an hour, that's it, there's not like a more standard set? Some business would want to do like a more benign set of hour changes?
I don't actually know the answer to that off the top of my head. Because they're proposing changes to the hours and the original east permit stated different hours. We wanted to just formalize it, make it clear that these hours are allowed. I'd have to look into that and get back to you if they were only proposing half an hour change, what the process would be.
I'll just add two things, in certain parts of the city, I know downtown, late night. And then typically, when we get a CUP, you have hours of operation for expedition, if you want to change the condition. It's really best practice with more than the raw hours.
I guess I'm just, maybe it's a hypothetical, but what were their hours before? It seems like a relatively benign set of operating hours, I'm just anticipating, is there going to be some future business that has to come before us only to change their hours?
So the previous use permit allowed hours from six thirty AM to five thirty PM. This permit and the conditions we've placed allow operation between six AM and eleven PM. Anything before six AM or after eleven PM would be considered late night hours. And that does require a permit, but. Changes within that timeframe wouldn't need a permit modification.
That was awful, I think everything else I had.
Okay, thank you for that, so I have a question, if. These CUPs have a lifetime, right? I mean, they are like five years or whatever, and they need to be usually renewed. Is that correct, Nishant?
Rob, could you help me with that question?
CUPs, well, CUPs can be tied, often Nishant asked by answer this one. You can do one of two ways and get time limited for five to ten years, sometimes for cell towers or things like that. Many cases it's tied to the use. As long as the use is in operation, the CUP is active. Usually it's only time limited if you think something's going to change, like the general plan. Or you're unsure of the use, and you want to check back in five years. But if it's a relatively benign use, typically, as long as the use is operative, CUPs.
So the reason I ask this question is, you know, let's say. Let's say the previous restaurant. You know, they went out of business and then. Another business, a non-restaurant business moves into the space. And then after a while, they go. When this restaurant moves in, is the CUP still? Active or because there was a non-restaurant before? You sort of get reset?
Uh, that's where I need a senior planner. So Campbell's Code might have details typically. I mean, if a restaurant isn't allowed use by rights, so without having to have liquor or nine hours, you could just really don't expect it. The CUP expired. CUP might exist in this case because they had originally beer and wine. Specific hours, so that's one thing to consider. But if you need a CUP for a restaurant. And the restaurant ceased since another use went in. CUP technically expires.
I would have to confirm this, I believe it's a twelve month period if. The site is not operated as the use that was approved, then the permit does expire. I'd have to check the time period, but I think there is one.
Okay, it was just a hypothetical, you know. Okay, with, you have a question, okay?
So I just wanted to clarify. Is that the reason why we're approving this? It was empty for so long?
No, the use permit modification is to.
Add alcohol.
Yeah, no.
Yeah, the modification is to allow the sale of liquor along with beer and wine.
Oh, liquor, okay, okay, I guess I didn't see that, okay. Thanks, and I have another question, which isn't really about having a problem with this issue, but. The corridor, the commercial corridor and the issue of. The density of the number of alcohol establishments. Obviously, this is not a problem here, but I was curious about the fact that. The area that we, that was viewed was just Hamilton. And it didn't. It didn't include like up and down Winchester a block or two. It would make. Would make more sense to me that it's, this is long near a quarter. But so you're, you're not including. You know, establishments that are a couple of blocks away on the cross. Which would make more common sense to me that you would be looking at a radius. Not just the strip. So I, I just for future reference, it would seem to me that when we look, obviously in this case, it's not. The number would still be okay, but in general. You would want to look at a, I think a radius around that location rather than this near strip. So it's just, I don't understand why we did that, but technically, it's not a question, it's common. But I, so I guess why, why did we come up with this commercial corridor strip versus a radius?
I, I thought because that we are near the city limits, we didn't go past city limits, is that a possibility?
Well, no, because first of all, we're two blocks north. And there are many, many blocks south of Winchester that are well, are in city. And there's actually three alcohol establishments just a block, less than a block south. Okay, so, so it's not that issue at all, I mean, you're right, north of Hamilton is only a couple of blocks. On Winchester, but south of it, south, it goes forever, so. Just. I, I guess technically if I'm gonna make any questions, like do we know why we did this? Is that because that was, that's a corridor that's like established on our map in the general plan?
So it's, it's not an established commercial corridor, the code gives Planning Commission some. Discretion for defining what a commercial corridor is based on the city's. Process for judging over concentration, so. When staff is looking at this, we're looking at. Is there a specific area where commercial properties are? In close proximity to each other and people tend to kind of go between those properties. And that's how we, how we define it, traditionally, commercial corridors are defined as being along one street. Might extend, you know, a parcel or two, south or north or east or west on that street. They're generally defined as, as one street, which is why we did. East Hamilton Avenue, and there are commercial properties, the further east and further south, but. They're a little bit further away, so we just consider this area as the corridor.
Okay, I'm just saying maybe. I'm very familiar with that here, it's like, I know that there are, when you go a block or two. I'm not sure. About north on Winchester, but south on Winchester. Well, there's, there's commercial. Both, on both directions, including restaurants, so, so it seems to me that. It should have, it should have incorporated.
Okay.
Winchester as well.
Okay, thank you, so. So thank you staff for that, I'm gonna open the public hearing. And ask for applicant for the, for her presentation. If, if, if there is a presentation, we don't have to. So you have five minutes?
What I'd like to do is introduce my clients. Because the staff report and what I wrote, not the staff report, but what I wrote in terms of the description was, I think, really complete. And I'd like to introduce Udelia and Nicolas Procasolis, they're the owners. And they also own another small restaurant. That is very popular and that's for this gentleman here, Mr. Fields. Commissioner Fields, that's where he goes. They have ample experience to have this location. What's going to be changed is that they're going to have a even larger. Menu that's going to have significant seafood because they're from Oaxaca.
Oaxaca.
And.
Mayarit.
And Mayarit. So expect an even better menu. Yes, it's going to be very exciting for them. And like I said, they have total experience for it. Management of the shopping center is all hands on, trust me. So anything goes wrong with that tequila, they're gonna be on. Seriously, and they are experienced with the LEED program for ABC that says that they know. How to handle the liquor service and how to have their servers be prepared for it as well, which means twenty one in a work. So I was very. Complete in my description of their location. So Udelia quiere decir algo? Saludarlos, invitarlos.
Sí, que los invitamos a todos para que vayan a la gran opening también y también a. A nuestros costumers, no, para que vayan porque tengo muchos conocidos acá que este que va con nosotros también.
Yeah, so she'd like to invite you not only to go there, but to go to the grand opening. ¿Cuánto tu ves que va a ser?
Pienso que en un mes o menos.
In about a month or so. Right now, when you took the drive-by, you saw the windows covered and everything, but if you peeked. You would see the very nice furniture that they got for the place, and then there's gonna be seating outdoors, which is gonna be great too. So they're gonna do everything right. You can count on it for sure. That it?
También vamos a tener pues desayunos americanos y todos.
The menu, there's going to be American food and Mexican food, and then the seafood. And she called it sushi, but basically, you know, you're gonna get that. Stuffed bread snapper and in the ceviche and all of that, but you're also gonna get an American breakfast, eggs and bacon. Waffles, things like that, so they're doing. What was it? And pancakes. So I think you're, you've got a good business coming into Campbell here. Continuation of a business, but they are going to keep the little one open too. But you've got to come, Davis, to the big one, to the other one. And Matt, we expect you there too.
Yes, yes. Be customers.
Any questions?
Okay, so you answered my question, I was gonna ask if this was replacing the other one, to go to a bigger space or not. So that place is still gonna, around the corner, still gonna be there?
Yes.
So just as an aside, I used to go. To it when it was called Dos Hermanos, Rosos Manos before, before, so you're different owners than the previous owners?
Before, yes.
Okay, so you were.
Los dos compadres.
They took over. So is the burrito different?
Yeah. Better. Better, there you go.
I really like the burrito. Oh, oh, just one more thing, are you gonna have chili killings?
Yes.
Yes, yes?
Red and green, he said.
All right.
Yeah.
You know, this is many, that's great.
No, this is gonna be great. I come from, I moved to Gilroy, I used to work here in San Jose, and we just had a restaurant like theirs open. As well, and there's this Filipino food, American and Mexican. And it's so nice to go in there and you see a plate and. You don't even need the menu, you just see the plates and you end up eating this and that. You know, and with Campbell, this is away from the downtown, so the liquor isn't gonna be an issue. I've done. A couple of permits for places in downtown Campbell, and I understand the concerns there. But this one won't be like that, and you were talking about why the need for a permit, well, it's a modification. Because of the alcohol. And the license is so much more expensive. But what's a taco without a tequila, you know? Or if they decide to do a little karaoke or whatever, you need a tequila. You know, it's tradition.
Margaritas.
Una margarita. So you know, it's gonna work out just fine. And the location was empty for three years. Three years, mind you, and so obviously their permit. Campbell is different, but it would have expired in six months. And here it continues, so the hours and the tequila did make for the modification being necessary. We were very clear about that, yeah.
Well, thank you, thank you for all those details and congratulations on your expansion from a smaller to a bigger facility, yeah. Sounds very exciting and delicious.
But now you know them, so when you come in, we get extra service, extra chips.
Of course.
Check if there's any questions on this side of the aisle?
Okay. I did actually have one, I did notice the sign like a year ago, you had a sign up that said coming soon. Like at the location, like I think it was like, was almost a year ago. Why did it take so long?
Thirteen months.
What caused it to take so long?
I'll let you know.
Yeah.
Primarily, it was the new management. The new management.
Of the complex.
Of the complex, yes, because we were ready to go since summer, right? And it just kept getting delayed and delayed, and they didn't want this, they didn't want that, and. It got delayed, and then the construction as well. And because they had to approve everything. So I hope I'm not getting anybody in trouble with this, but it, it all goes back to the management of the center.
Not a city process purely like the shopping center.
Everything was fine, we did well. You know, and it was a constant change this, change that, and. That's the way it was. Because since January, we already had, I had the paperwork ready. January of last year. Think about it. Yeah, and then it just started getting pushed back and pushed back. So, yeah. So the, why was it empty for three years, now you know.
Yeah, all right.
Well, COVID, COVID, you know, probably played a part in that.
COVID was in twenty twenty, we're in twenty twenty five.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Very much, okay, so. I will close the public, are there any? Public speakers online, okay, I'll close the public hearing. So back to staff, any clarifications or any responses? Nishant?
No, nothing for me.
Commission discussion. Okay, Commissioner Craig, thank you.
Yeah, no, I, I, this is, it's funny, this is one of the centers I just had never been in. And I think it's really a good example of the successful one. You got the Walgreens, you got a FedEx store that's really vibrant, and then I walked around and you got. Stanford Health and Kaiser has a facility there and a really fine restaurant. I liked how the, there was outdoor seating, and I was kind of wondering about that, but it's set back pretty far from Winchester. And I think it'll work, I think it'll work nice there for the, just the sixteen seats that they have there, so. But, Nishant, so in terms of the. The only kind of discretion item that Commissioner Zister had on, and I also was looking at that too myself, how. PC has a discretion on, you know, what is the surrounding area, we use the East Hamilton Commercial Corridor. Any, any quick look at that area, you can see there's absolutely no problem with an over concentration, there's no problem with this project. But I guess I, I'm just thinking ahead in terms of planning commission stuff that comes up and. And how we've done all the objective standards, and we tried to objectify so many other things in different contexts. You could see at some point that being an issue. You know, where are you, where are you defining the boundaries of, of. Of the commercial corridor, where's the over concentration, do you include this block, do you include that street? So I don't know if other cities have actually tried to objectify this or really create boundaries or not. Absolutely no issue with this, with this project, all, all in favor of it, but. I had the same thought that Commissioner Zister did as well, so you can see that maybe popping up as an issue. Somewhere down the road, but maybe not, maybe it's something that you just have to use common sense and take it. On a case by case basis, so anyway, this project perfectly fine.
Wonderful, thank you. Any other commissioners wants to chime in?
I'll just say, I think it's great, I just, I think it's great that they're filling that spot, I actually go to that. Center quite regularly because I go to the Walgreens and I go to Kinko's. And. There's a couple, there used to be a Schwab there that moved to downtown, and that's empty, so. So there's been a couple of empty spots, so it's nice to see when the spots get filled. And so I'm looking forward to it, so.
It's good visibility, yeah.
Super supportive, wonderful restaurant, excited for two, and yeah, very supportive.
Perfect.
Very supportive as well.
Okay, so Commissioner Bookbinder, anything or?
I don't have any notes on this, I think it's, especially with the mention, with the list of. Like doesn't flag this, doesn't flag that. This does seem like if we were going to streamline alcohol permits, this would be a really good candidate for the type of alcohol permit we would streamline. Given that, I don't really have notes.
Okay, thank you, so I'm the same thing, you know, I'm very supportive, I think. It's gonna be excellent addition, and thank you for. Considering. Campbell again. So do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, Vice Chair.
I move the Planning Commission adopt a resolution approving a conditional use permit modification to allow full service onsite alcohol sales. And amend hours of operation in association with a proposed restaurant with approved outdoor seating.
Excellent.
All second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. And let's take a vote. Commissioner Majewski?
Aye.
Commissioner Sizer?
Aye.
Commissioner Ostrowski?
Aye.
Commissioner Bookbinder?
Aye.
Commissioner Craig?
Aye.
Pastor Fields?
Aye.
Chair Cam Car? Aye. Wonderful, so that passes unanimously, congratulations. Thank you very much. Single de mayo. You're gonna be busy, yes. Okay. Next is, oh. Announcement of appeal procedures, if anybody wants to appeal this, they have ten days to do it. And. So next item would be. Would be, let's see. What's the next item? I guess it's. I'm sorry, what was that?
Work plan.
A work plan, yes. Work plan, so commission, so director if you could.
Yeah, happily decided, so Commissioner, remember you reviewed this last month, I gave inputs. Hopefully, I faithfully captured that in your packet. And on the screen, I can walk you through it, I put in redline the changes. So just to highlight a few, on the work plan I've added, consideration of modifications to the site and architectural review committee. You've given input on that. You did give feedback on wanting to check in on the economic development plan, I put an item in on that, that would be implemented. Confirming with Commissioners Ostrowski and Chair Cam Car, the title of the ad hoc subcommittee. Valuation of land use densities for missing metal projects, sounds good. And I put a note at the bottom of item five, and be sure to put it in our oral presentation next week to City Council. Based on your feedback, the Planning Commission respectfully requests to modify the requirement in the ordinance code. Attending the League of California's, California Cities Land Commissioners Academy. From two consecutive years to attending once per commissioner term. And last but not least, I tried to capture a lot of highlights you had of last year, I thought the council would be good to know, things you've been working on. And so I highlighted uh things such as inclusion, how's the ordinance where you made recommendations? Decisions on types of projects such as the Virginia Townhome Project, appeals, you'll remember the fence exception permit, your ad hoc subcommittee work, uh your study sessions, which including Chick-fil-A. Public comments on, accepting public comments on the draft EIR, and then finally your attendance at both the League and the American Planning Association. Uh with that, I've uh asked the manager to hold off on finalizing your draft work plan until I get feedback tonight. But open any final tidbits to add and we'll submit that in.
Okay, um any questions?
I just have a a note here. Uh it's been some years since I've been to the uh Cal Cities Planning Commissioner Academy. I saw a report from it and I'm not really supportive of sending people to that at this point, given how I'm gonna be straightforward about this. The position of Cal Cities as presented in their legislative updates and so forth seems to be that the state should not be stepping on cities' ability to do local control and block housing thereby. That is contradictory to, it's pretty much trying to work around state law, which I don't think is the city's position. It's also attempting to get better at blocking housing and kicking the can down the road further, which again, I don't think is the city's position. I don't think we should be funding this sort of thing, and I don't think we should be sending people to this, or if we do, we should send people to a ideologically opposite kind of thing. I'm not sure what the benefit is to like supporting this kind of thing. I'm really disappointed from whatever.
Thank you, thank you for that.
I can give specific examples of people like you, or if anybody has been to Planning Commissioners Academy more recently than I have. If you think I'm totally off base.
Is Friday recent enough?
Friday is recent enough.
Yes, we just have to come back.
Yeah.
Uh this may be a good time to talk about your experiences.
Yeah, sure, I mean.
Go ahead.
Yeah, um that I do think and please just jump in as you see fit. I think there is a core to it that especially going the first time is just a pretty useful overview of like good nuggets to know if you're on a planning commission. And there was a session about um how to be an effective chair. And somebody actually got up and said something that I thought was really kind of cool. That they said when you get in these sessions and people are like applauding for one side, what do you do? And this guy stood up and said something that their town does is when this starts, the mayor basically addresses the crowd and says like, hey, how would you like it if you were here and you wanted to speak on something, but you had the opposite position? And you realized everybody else in here was like rowdy and, you know, you didn't really feel like you were supported or being heard. Like, how would that make you feel and kind of appeal to people's humanity? Oh, that was like great and something that we could like apply, because we've had clapping. So I did think there were a lot of like good nuggets in there. I I very supportive of going once a term. I I there was a lot of redundancy for me having gone like three years ago. But there's a lot of good core curriculum. I think my other two thematic things. One, it was only one session, but the closing session was on exactly what you said. And I was also just kind of shocked at the Cal Cities position, because I gotta say, the rest of the conference didn't have this overtone. It was like planners talking about what they were doing, a lot of developers presenting about how they are approaching sort of new legislation. And then this last session, there was a lobbyist Cal Cities that got up there and was like flippant about, like you, I think you saw the slides, but I just thought he was I don't, I couldn't believe somebody talked like that in front of four hundred people. And somebody asked him a question, basically was like, hey, my city is pro housing, why is Cal Cities doing this? And he basically said, well, that is our policy position set by our committee and our members, uh, which is prompted me to email Rob and say like, I'd love to know more about like how, what is our connection with Cal Cities? Do we, you know, are are we like just learning more about how we connect with them? Because it just, it did really surprise me. I had no idea the extent to which he really did sort of go law by law and be like, we don't like this. We don't like certain state representatives, like it was, it was not good.
Wow.
Who was that person talking to?
His name is on the site. He was a lobbyist for Cal Cities.
Alright, thank you.
Uh who organized the conference. The third big thing that I felt like was unaddressed is a lot of the sessions basically said here are all the ways the planning commission no longer has uh a voice or a role in the process because of state actions or like, well, you don't do this, it's Mr. Hill. And then like one of the presentations, there were like fifty slides of all the things we no longer really could do. And then there was a final slide, it was like, so what do you do? And it was pretty short. And it was like sequoia and like, eh, maybe if you had objective standards in certain, you know, places, but like I feel like there's, we should be having a broader conversation about like, well, what do we focus on here? Because uh, you know, is it policy? But what's appropriate? Like, what do, what do we do? So um I don't feel like that got explored enough at the conference, but that was one of my sort of open questions is like, you know, five years from now, what are we doing if the state sort of keeps making a lot of objective standards? Like what, what should our focus be?
What remains?
Well, but
Wonderful, thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, I I didn't attend the um ethics training or the harassment training, but I I did attend those my first year. I think those are useful for new people. I was just kind of like, I was think I was there within two months of coming into the planning commission. So as a new commissioner, like getting the more of an idea of what, what this is was helpful. As far as the very, I will say biased opinion in my, my own opinion of the lobbyist. It was nice when we had people like that talking. There were pretty long sessions at the end of Q and A for commissioners from all over the state. I don't know how many, there are hundreds of people there probably um expressing their thoughts and opinions, so it's not like they were just propaganda, is that propagandizing us or anything like that? But um so I, and I think it's useful to hear. There are lots of people in Sacramento that talk that way and have those opinions, so I am curious to see what how we're involved with them exactly. How, and we, they said we'll take feedback from individual cities if we, you know, I don't know how we do that. If we just email that guy and say, I don't like what she said. You know, but um I think it has value. And I did like hearing from some of, we had some panelists that were commissioners themselves or had been for many years, so hearing their kind of wisdom and personal stories was very interesting. So I think it has value.
And we had a very special community development director chair several sessions, which I believe may have been the best one, so I can't not mention that. Westwood somebody, I don't remember what it is.
So I I would just, you know, uh since I wasn't there, um you know, my take is that if you have a problem with you should voice it to them, you know, you, you know, on an individual basis. I would, I would write an email. And that's what I would probably do if I, I thought. I personally think I'd never I, the one other time, the one time I went, I don't recall there being a a lobbyist getting up and pushing uh something, but um to me, it's a, it's supposed to be a training. And it seems to me that it should be unbiased and objective. And this kind of stuff should not be included. If if they take positions as an advocate, uh if they have an advocacy lobbyist side of the bu- business, shouldn't be in there. Okay, that's my take. Now, you know, they probably have a different uh position on it, obviously, but but I think we have a right to voice our objection to that. And if you two feel strongly enough, then I would uh encourage you to do that. So I don't know if if the commission can do it on a group or the city or what, but uh it, it, I, I think they should hear the feedback on that, so. And I would definitely be opposed to that kind of thing in the future. Whether or not we participate is, I don't know, if if uh we're all adults, we all have open minds, we understand when somebody's pitching something, but it sounds like he wasn't very subtle. So I think, you know, if the, if the value of the training is worthwhile, then we should probably continue to participate in it.
I'll, I'll say I went last year as well. I don't know if you agree, Commissioner Kamkar, but um I don't feel it was that I don't know, he didn't have, he seemed more neutral when they did that presentation before of the come upcoming leg- legislation.
Thank you for bringing that up. You know, I've been to quite a few of these, you know, being commissioners for almost eleven years now, not in Campbell, but um having, and I, and I almost always try to attend if city doesn't have two or more, if there's an open start, I try to attend. Because like Commissioner Zister, I like training. Um and my experience has been if it's a planning commissioner conference, it's a little, to a little different tone than if it's a like League of Cities Conference, because League of Cities Conference, you get a lot of the staff there. Whereas Planning Commission Conference, you get mostly planning commissioners, you know, and so, um and I've, and I think there's a little bit of a difference in the tone of that lobby, you know. When you're talking to staff, well I know many staff, maybe not ours, but many staff in cities are not happy with all the with all the mandates that come down from the state. And, you know, they, they may not even agree with it, you know, and so I think this League of Cities is sort of geared towards that audience, you know, and so when other commissioners or other people attend, they, they, they hear that, but but I agree with you. Last year, I felt, and I think it was in Long Beach, um uh in the fall. Or was it the, was it the spring?
It was March.
I think, yes, you're right. It was, it was March in Long Beach. It was, it felt pretty neutral, you know, it didn't feel but they did, but they did explain the difference, like this is gonna do this, this is gonna do this, you know, so. And and, and believe it or not, that's my favorite part of the whole thing, because
Yeah.
Because it, it explains everything, you know, it goes over the items and, you know, it's pretty fast, but so um that's been my experience.
If it helps, I guess two things. I, you know, I volunteered to help the League and ended up being the vice president of now I'm the president next year, so. So two things, uh I'm supposed to be setting up next year's academy, so hopefully I have a say in that.
Yeah.
And I would agree with the commission, it's a training, it's not a, it's not a political uh academy, it's a training camp, so. Uh I'm glad you put that on the table, like to follow up in the best I can, I say, I'll set it up next year. Uh I don't know, you know, there's four hundred and eighty-two cities in California, and the answer is I don't know is like how four hundred and eighty-two cities and their representatives feed into the league and set their legislative agenda. Uh if I find out more information on that, I'm assuming it's through elected officials and review those. I'm happy to report that at, but at least for next year's academy, uh good feedback and see if we can make it more neutral.
Have I had a question about the subcommittees? Um so we talked before about investigating the um like the fencing and whether we need to make updates with respect to the fence. Is that which I could definitely help with, but um since I'm already on the land use, missing metal subcommittee, probably be uh unrealistic to do both at the same time, but is it something we want to add as a work item, but not an immediate work item? I just don't want to miss the cycle of work item additions going with this and. Yeah. Probably would be good. And I'm still looking for a ball.
Just for, for context, I don't know the details of this, but I believe California's city's mission is to restore and protect local control for cities, it's kind of like the first line. Um I believe they may do like a one-city-one-vote thing, which means that people who live in tiny, tiny cities will be way overrepresented, like San Francisco gets one vote and Los Altos Hills gets one vote. Uh that may be the way that works. Um and if you have like way to make it not be like that, it's good. It's just playing training stuff, fantastic, but like, how did that happen?
You mean representatives as opposed to a senate?
Yeah, yeah, we should have some kind of, like, say, we should have, it's, it's like we have a way of for cities to be represented. It's called the state legislature. This is, this is a way.
What is, what is it that they vote on, that they each get one vote?
I assume policy positions, like do they support or not endorse or not endorse legislation? It's sort of a weird parallel thing to our actual legislature.
I believe the planning commission, the county is also a planning commission, so. Always a vice.
You know, on the fence thing, I I uh, I'm on the fence about the fence thing, but um you, you know, it, it seems to me that I don't know how simple it is, but it would be nice to know how, how simple or complicated our code is on fencing. Whether or not it's worthy of a, of a study, in other words, is there a way to without taking too much of Stevens or Daniels' time, to, to look at what the code is now and how it differs from place to place, so that we can look at and say, is this really a a big enough deal versus just looking at, and can it, can you do a summary in two pages that says, these are what defense codes are, and then we can look at it and say how significant it is and whether it's deserving of a three-month subcommittee versus, you know, something much more simpler that we could figure out.
Well, I think the point is not to put it on the staff's
Yeah.
plate, but that's a great starting point.
Yeah. And I, I wouldn't want them to spend days on it. I just, it's like if there's a couple hours of time looking at the codes, offenses, is, is whether or not we can see what the issue is.
I agree.
So another idea, if you couldn't find a, a, another volunteer with you, you want to add it to the land use and um missing metal subcommittee?
It definitely falls, yes, there's so many elements that overlap in terms of land use and the relationship between land use, fencing, privacy and maximizing land.
So, so ju- just as a, just as a, you know, uh so-called
It's a good call out.
Plan B, you know, if Plan A didn't work then. And, and, and to me, you know, when it comes to fences and or any general plan, you know, when you're dealing with an odd lot, you know, there's an equity issue to apply general rules to an odd lot, like the one we heard, they were lot was so narrow, he couldn't set back anymore, and so obviously, I think we came up with a great solution, but um sometimes when something is odd, you have to have special consideration than just applying one size fits all. Uh just a personal opinion about that, but, okay.
Yeah, that's a good call out.
Just wanna add one other thing. I, I appreciate that, like, I thought it was very useful to go to the Planning Commissioners Academy, certainly to meet the other planning commissioners from around the state and to get a broader idea of like, how do you do things, how we do things and so forth, just wanna like, it would be really great if that could be separated out from the advocacy that the organization does. It seems like there's one really useful, helpful thing they do. I mean, the APA, American Planning Association also has a planning commissioner training series, but it wouldn't include the get together with all the other planning commissioners in the state, which is pretty cool. I don't know what leverage we have other than to say like, we're not going to this if you don't knock it off. Hopefully, Rob has some leverage on that front. Yeah, I, I think this may be like an inherent problem with the organizations, want to point that out and like it's not good and they're not sure what to do about it.
But if they're the organizers, you know, if you organize something, I'm sure you also want to push your point of view across as well, right? Uh, because I think their first, uh first uh I guess goal is not planning commissioner training, the first goal is to represent citizens' interests.
Specifically to push local control.
To local, yeah, and so as a way of doing that, you know, I used to organize festivals and so I have to see what's common and then also push your own agenda, you know, with what's, you know, uh common denominator between people, you know, I.
I mean, if you even just like formally complain about that in some fashion.
I built in the survey that sort of said exactly what I said here.
I appreciate that.
Yeah. And uh And uh. I do think he was an outlier. I mean, like, I get what you're saying, but this also didn't match my first run in Anaheim. Three years ago, I remember it being like benign, they just talked about.
Yeah.
The state bills and stuff, because like I was looking forward to the session, like let's learn about the, so. I feel like we should keep an eye on it and see if this, you know, really takes a turn, but he just seemed like a worked up. Yeah, this, this is, this is also sort of a little bit slightly afield, but. I'm, I'm a little disturbed that we and all the other cities that are participating in this are with our dollars. Supporting an organization that lobbies against our interests or our stated interests as a city. I'm not sure how to reconcile that, like if. Even if the, their legislative guy is more polite at the planning commissioners meeting, that's what they had to do for. And we're supporting them. That also bothers me. I've said my case.
Okay. Thank you for that. Um, uh, do we need to take your vote on the, on the work plan? No, just.
The only note I have is I can put in a forens, like commission, we look at create ad hoc, so can we study fence standards? If you have any additional, let me know, otherwise I'll close up.
Yeah, I appreciate you adding the uh economic development plan.
Yeah.
Peace.
Okay, so next item is.
Bob gets to talk.
I guess, yeah, a report on, uh, so we did the planning commissioner subcommittee reports. So you, we went through that and report of committee director. Uh, report about community development.
Uh, nothing much more to add. Well, one or two items you might be interested in. So last uh council meeting last Tuesday, two items of note to the commission. Home Depot, you'll remember, uh, came through you, uh, when city council was approved. Uh, I think it was unanimous vote. We did have a number of public speakers who were neighbors. Uh, one condition staff actually did add between planning commission and the council is to have proactive monitoring of the site. And so we put in the condition they submit a cash deposit. And we would have a code enforcement officer proactively go out at least once a week to monitor and make sure Home Depot's. Uh, living up to the standard you're part. What's that?
What site is that?
Is the Home Depot site? Is the.
I don't know, you missed that. Yeah, it was about the use of the back of the side.
Yeah, that was library.
Putting storage.
Okay, okay.
Storage, yeah.
Okay.
So that's been approved, and let's all hope Home Depot uh sticks to the standards. Uh, there's right. For myself to schedule a revocation hearing, which is things going on course. Did the um store manager come? Uh, he did, yeah, I don't think he spoke, but he was.
He was all good, alright, yeah. Trust it a little there.
And then item two, you're probably very interested in, uh, the council uh accepted and allowed staff to push on to the state. The annual progress report on housing, so this is both on our general plan. Status of our own policies, that's not monitored by the state, but, but generally how we're doing with the Reno and our housing policy programs. Uh, I will say that uh we are underperforming. Uh, the planning commission knows we've done huge, huge investments in our housing program. Um, a lot of that is in high density housing. And a lot of the projects you've seen come through on, are on the few sites where we're uh at zoning for, say, townhomes. Things like that, but most of the remaining sites in Campbell are planned for identity, which really does meet our Reno. And probably three to four factors, interest rates, supply chain, and many folks argue right now labor. Uh, emerging labor challenges are presenting all challenges to identity housing. So um, I am, uh, so a couple of things, I know there's commissioner interest on looking at a report and seeing how we're doing. Uh, I could do one of three things. One is we can just send you a link, probably accessible. Uh, two, if you want, I could bring it to your next planning commission meeting, you can walk through it. Three, I did tell the council that I wanted this to be a learning experience, uh, and, you know, if we continue on these trends, we will definitely not hit our Reno. And so I've been pulling staff, affordable housing developers and market rate developers, other new tools and things we should be doing. And I am planning on coming back to council, probably in the May timeframe, just to put on the table any other ideas or pivots in our policies. And on the road to that, if you like, I could come back and show you the APR and just some of the discussion points we take to council, so. Uh, that might be an option.
So in the, in the report, I, I would, I would mind us doing it here, uh, seeing it, but um. The, the, the number that is there for what's. As of whatever date, it, does that include things that are not finished? What, what's the, what's the number is only if it's after it's finished, that that gets on the list?
There's a couple of tables, and again, I would defer to the technical staff. Uh, but generally, you only get your count once the building permit's issued. I guess technically if it wasn't issued and built, it would be undercounted, but. Building permit issuance is the demarcation that that unit will be built. We do have a number of projects still in the pipeline, so like the, the townhome projects are entitled and not all the permits are pulled and. We have some projects that have been applied for. Uh, so we do have a look ahead on, on what's coming through. I'd say I. Asked the planners, even he took all that into consideration, even the projects that, you know, even came to you, memory, I remember there was one at the Hickory Pit and some others. To which we're not sure, even sure if they came back. If all those projects still manifest, uh, at this point, we're still not, not hitting it.
Yeah. Um, one of the things that, uh, when somebody takes out the permit to build. Let's say they've gone through the entitlement, that has an expiration date, right? If they, they gotta, they gotta be actively trying to build, then one of the things that may be a, uh. The lowest hanging fruit that we could do as a city is give them a longer expiration date. You know, this way, they're not always in a hurry. Or they can a little bit more time, because to build is the hardest part, you know, all the other stuff is paperwork, you know, reports and. Maps and things like that, so what process do we have to go if we wanted to either give them a longer expiration day? Or something that's easily renewable, you get two years and I, and I just request two years, you know, so. Because many people may not want to start this processing, I'm not sure if I can build.
I, I thought they applied for an extension. Isn't that the way we do it?
Only once, I think, I, I think you get one automatic extension.
Yeah, but I mean, I don't mean automatic, I mean, don't they apply, if they're coming up on their deadline. I, I, it seems to me that we, we see, uh, they ask for a two-year extent, I think it was one, it was a two-year extension. Is that, is that how we do it normally?
It is, yeah, I, I don't typically, I know Campbell has one approval, I think it's. Two years and then you can apply for extension for another two years, and that's have the technical staff verify that, and that's typical with most cities. Uh, one thing I appreciate, I know we're doing in our affordable housing overlay zone, if you're affordable housing developer, you get entitlement. You're subject to that, you get much longer approval.
Perfect.
Uh, we did get feedback for housing, affordable housing developers, they'd like something even longer. We have. There's a huge pipeline of approved affordable housing projects, even here in Campbell. They don't, they don't have the funding to build at this point, so they're just sitting. Uh, typically with market rate developers, again, now especially the townhome developers, they wish you could have a building permit tomorrow. So there's, there's a mix of types, some of those who want a public permit right away, some who get a title and sort of sell and sit on it.
Okay.
I just want to say like, I'm very excited that we are noticing that we're not on the right track and we're thinking about what differently. Um, thank you for starkly giving us to get the um, reader report, I'm sorry, the EPR. Earlier this week, and I saw the bit saying, keep going on this, uh, at this rate. You'll have about six hundred and seventy units out of twenty-nine hundred at the end of our planning cycle, and that's terrible. So I really like the idea that we're going to, before the end of it, say, boy, what can we do differently? So just.
What was the, what's the APR?
My annual progress report, it's every year.
I, I know, I know.
So just to be clear, in May, we're going to be looking and talking about policies and things to. Like. To trigger or loosen or, or encourage development. Yeah, it's the plan, just to bring back some new ideas. Again, a lot of, you know, with, with housing, uh, there's things we control. By the extent, uh, there are things we control, I'm interested in bringing back some ideas on. I'm really looking forward to that. Thank you for like, I really appreciate the city being proactive about that.
How many of you are interested in getting the reports, uh, at our next?
Sure, yeah.
Ever, ever listening, okay, so it would be in favor of that, thank you. Um, with that, unless there's any other item, we are adjourned to. Planning commission meeting of March twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five, seven. Thank you.